Like.
Well, we all got your.
Usually, usually the first, because this is always the last person. Actually, I had a chat with people at RAC. Is your draft going on? So your kid's playing?
Yeah. Is the draft going on now? Oh, no. Not only that, it's not a spot.
Going on there?
Third and fourth grade basketball.
There's a draft for that.
It's trying to make your team even.
Oh, you're honest, so it's been sunk. Huh?
You push the big.
Out of view.
No, I'm trying. Not that one above the open square at the top, no, on the other side.
Kathy wants to grab that mouse.
No, it's there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well done.
Oh, we muted.
Brian, you're completely off camera.
This is what I'm trying to do.
You can't be.
What's that you're drinking?
Soda, pure sparkling water.
It's gin and tonic. I'm gonna use guys again.
So what are we doing today?
I don't know.
Three.
We're.
Go into your world.
Two Blossoms being continued, so I'm gonna do that first.
Such a non-revolutionary.
Nobody on.
Was the, uh, the, um, the someone. Uh, the.
Yeah.
By law, asked for, uh, the driveways, like two, I said, that's what I want by.
Oh, gee.
That's it. That's called a Solossi method.
Everybody was, yeah.
I want to buy a Solossi.
For the I S L.
One was good, but not so much.
When do they announce the teams?
I'm probably gonna email from the coaches, I imagine.
It'd be so good.
Yeah.
I saw. What minute is it though?
I think it's twelve. Yeah, I think it's twelve. Depending on the age group.
I haven't been twelve one yet, haven't.
So we'll see.
Do you see?
Nine people.
And you know, if you haven't noticed by now, I don't.
He's waiting.
Let's make fun of people.
Review.
It's still six fifty-nine.
Yeah, but where? The people are in the waiting room.
There's ten.
There's participants.
Right there. You have to admit them individually?
Yes.
Oh, admit all right at the top, Sarah.
All time.
Admit all. Go up one more.
I just wanna grab that.
There you go.
She set up the meeting.
They can join us. I could be, uh.
They'll be out tonight.
I'd be.
She's doing remote.
Where is Gil?
I don't know.
She'll be on a phone somewhere.
Yeah, well, you're gonna be on the here, because the problem recently not getting the minutes is because of.
You know, it's on the back lawn.
Yes, we just lost out.
Crosses, that's the thing. They go all the time.
Yeah. That's great.
I'm sensing some sarcasm. You miss me when I'm gone.
Here we go.
So you got to keep me another month anyway. I'm staying on until.
You're finding a recruiter? Yeah, you gotta find a replacement.
You already did, very good.
Sure. I, I get, uh, Rob Scott. Rob is a former building inspector who's in town. He works for the state.
Oh, it has to be posted.
And ETA, but yeah, we'll get to that point. I think it's like.
Doesn't he have to go before the, uh, select board?
Oh, yeah, I know people.
That's what you do, but.
I know.
It's still a process. Unfortunately, about the name of.
I don't think so, but I don't think they asked me like anything.
It's changed.
They asked me like my name. I was pregnant at the time. They're like, you're having a baby. I was like, yes.
Uh, it's seven oh one P M. On Wednesday, November sixteenth, I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. It's a high grade meeting with the zoning board of appeals in room seven and the public and applicants via Zoom. I'm Sarah Mellers, the chair of the zoning board of appeals. I live with me on my right, John Benares, on my left, James Mitchell on his left, Catherine Howe on her left, Sean Zahn, and on his left, at the end, Brian Solis. We're going to change the order, um, that was on the agenda because, um, we've had a request from both the applicant and the property owners of Two Blossom to continue, uh, the public hearing, so I will address that first. I will open the continued public hearing for the application of Benjamin B. Timean, attorney on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of one through three Blossom Lane for the appeal of an administrative decision under section seven point four point five of the zoning bylaw regarding a request for zoning enforcement filed with the building inspector on June twenty first, twenty twenty-two for construction in progress, which appears to exceed the scope of the special permit granted and the building permit issued at Two Blossom Lane, assessors map number seventeen, lot number twelve in District E, filed with the town clerk on August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Timman, are you requesting this continuance?
Um, yeah, yes, I am, Madam Chair. I guess more precisely, I'm consenting to the request that was made by uh, the Smiths for a continuance, but in effect, that's correct.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Glofsky, are you representing the property owners?
Yes, I'm representing Rodney and Carla Smith, and, uh, we are indeed, uh, requesting the continuance.
Thank you. At the request of the applicant and the property owner, I move to continue the public hearing to December twenty first, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. And extend the time for writing the decision to March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three for the application of Benjamin B. Timean, attorney on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of one to three Blossom Lane for the appeal of an administrative decision under section seven point four point five, the zoning bylaw regarding a request for zoning enforcement filed with the building inspector on June twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for construction in progress, which appears to exceed the scope of the special permit granted and building permit issued at Two Blossom Lane, assessors map number seventeen, lot number twelve, and District E, filed with the town clerk on August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
James seconds. Any discussion? Uh, take a vote to approve.
Approve.
Approve. True.
True.
And I approve.
Very well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you know, Sarah, I just admitted a bunch of people that were in the waiting room, seven people didn't join.
Oh, will you keep track of that?
Yeah. Give me the mouse, case it's, I'll be here as well.
Yeah, I'm irritated that you set up that way.
Thank you, John Gail.
Okay, so that gets rid of that. The next item on the agenda is a new application. For one Dexter Lane. I will open the public hearing for the application of Mark B. Glofsky on behalf of T. Philip and Cynthia Caminos for a special permit under sections six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to convert an existing non-conforming use of an eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four square foot residential structure from a two-family to a three-family residence at One Dexter Lane, assessors map number thirty-six, lot number eleven in District C, filed with the town clerk on October seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Um, I've received a petition and support, um, from two residents who are butters at Four Dexter Lane and ten other residents in the vicinity on Forest Street. In addition, a letter of opposition was submitted by William E. Beany Esquire on behalf of Ronald D. Carderelli, Rusty, and a butter at One Dexter Lane. Um, we will start this public hearing for the applicant to present their case. Is that gonna be the property owners or Mr. Glofsky?
It will be Mr. Glofsky.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. I'm Mark Glofsky, an attorney with offices at Eight Washington Street in Beverly. I'm here tonight with, uh, T. Philip and Cynthia Caminos uh, with respect to the, their special permit application for the property at One Dexter Lane. Uh, the property was purchased by Mr. and Mrs. Caminos in nineteen ninety-eight. And since nineteen ninety-eight, they have been continuously and diligently and faithfully restoring uh, the house. Uh, that's a period of twenty-four years and uh, this is a building that was originally constructed in nineteen oh eight by another Philip, Philip Dexter, for whom the lane is named. Uh, it was originally called Boulderwood. It's a massive twenty-seven-room brick and limestone building situated on five point three, six, six acres in single dis- single residence District C. Uh, I understand that, um, most of the members of the board actually, uh, were present at the site visit last Saturday and also got to see the interior of the building. Um, so I'm thankful that you appreciate the magnitude of the, of the property. The property complies with all applicable, applicable dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. It is presently used as a two-dwelling unit building. The primary dwelling unit contains seven bedrooms and approximately fourteen thousand square feet of living area. The secondary dwelling unit contains three bedrooms with approximately forty-five hundred square feet of living area. The property has been listed and actively marketed since two thousand nineteen. I believe two thousand nineteen, uh, the Caminos will correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, unfortunately, their efforts have been unsuccessful, notwithstanding several price reductions. Consequently, they have determined that in light of the size and layout of the building, converting it from a two-unit building to a three-unit building would be appropriate for enhancing marketability and could be accomplished very easily with no change in the footprint of the building, no exterior changes, but merely by reinstalling an elevator and an emergency access door. The proposed three dwelling units are depicted on floor plans that were submitted with the application. Uh, unit one, which was, uh, shown in blue, is a, would be a five-bedroom unit containing approximately ten thousand forty-nine square feet of living area. Unit two, uh, which is shown in yellow on the plans before you, uh, is a three-bedroom unit containing approximately forty-four hundred square feet of living area. And unit three is colored in brown. It's a two-bedroom unit that would be located on the upper level containing approximately four thousand square feet of living area.
Yeah.
Uh, if the special permit is granted and the, uh, project is completed, it's anticipated that the dwelling units would be sold separately as condominium units. In order to accomplish this, the Caminos are seeking a special permit pursuant to section six point one point two of the Manchester zoning bylaw uh, to allow the conversion in accordance with those floor plans. As I suspect you know, uh, the standard for issuance of the special permit is contained in section six point one point two. And essentially, it states that the board is charged with making the finding that the change would not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. Additionally, uh, the Manchester zoning board has historically applied the seven factors that are listed in section seven point five point two in making the requisite finding. As part of the application, uh, we recited the fashion in which the project would satisfy the relevant factors. Uh, and I will just highlight them quickly for you. The first question or factor is whether the site is adequate in terms of size for the proposed use. In this case, uh, the property contains two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three square feet of land, which is approximately five times the minimum lot area in District C. It has been used as a ten-bedroom two-family dwelling since it was constructed in nineteen oh eight. The project would not modify the footprint, as I stated, and would not add rooms or bedrooms to the building. Uh, consequently, we do believe the site would be adequate. Uh, we also think that we can answer the second factor positively, the suitability of the site for the proposed use. Uh, again, uh, that the site has been used as a ten-bedroom dwelling for a long time. The eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four square feet of living area in the building, which contain, which is divided into twenty-seven rooms, can comfortably accommodate three dwelling units without structural change. And the building is located in the property in a manner that's, that screens it and, uh, from abutting properties. Uh, it's insulated by mature trees, vegetation, and topography. Third factor is the impact on traffic flow and safety. Uh, I would respectfully suggest that the traffic flow, uh, would have, uh, would be negligibly changed. Uh, there are two driveways that serve the property. Uh, the property has the benefit of a easement for all purposes for which public waste can be used in the town of Manchester over Mr. Carterelli's property. Uh, it is a recorded easement that has no limitation. However, we would anticipate that the primary traffic would be over the front driveway. Because of the manner in which the property is improved, uh, the rear dwelling unit can't be accessed from the front driveway, so by necessity, it is accessed from the rear driveway over Mr. Carterelli's property. We don't anticipate, uh, any significant increase in vehicle trips and consequently, uh, it shouldn't be an issue. Uh, the visual character of the neighborhood, which is the next factor, is certainly not going to be affected by the change. The septic system, which is, has been approved for ten bedrooms, complies with the requirements of Title V. And consequently, the next factor, the adequacy of the method of sewage disposal is satisfied. And, uh, the property is served by municipal water as well as a domestic well. Uh, the last factor is the impact on wildlife and natural resources. Uh, I would respectfully suggest that the proposed special permit would be preferable to division of the property uh, or other alternatives and will enable it a, uh, the preservation of a significant amount of open space. Uh, consequently, again, I would suggest that the, uh, special permit application meets the seven factors that are listed in the zoning bylaw and, uh, would, would respectfully suggest that the proposed special permit, uh, would, would not be significantly more detrimental uh, to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. Uh, I suspect that, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Caminos may have something to add, but, uh, I know that Attorney Amy is with us tonight, and I would respectfully reserve the opportunity to rebut anything that might be stated in opposition to the application. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. and Mrs. Caminos, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
Oh, yeah. First of all, we should probably say there are nine bedrooms, not ten, right?
Well, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, this is Philip Caminos. I'm here with my wife Cynthia. Uh, her image is a little blurred on
Sorry.
on the, uh, screen here because, uh, she's a little bit further away than I am. But I do have a brief statement that I'd like to submit.
It, it might be better if you could speak up a little bit.
Hey, sure, certainly. So is that, is that better? Can, can you hear me better now?
No.
No. No.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Karen.
Is this better?
Is this, is this better?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just, uh, I'll lean over here. So we've had the privilege of residing at One Dexter Lane for just shy of twenty-five years. During that time, we, we have viewed ourselves simply as temporary stewards of this unique and historically important property with the duty to return it to its former grandeur for the benefit of posterity. In fact, we've done just that with visitors unanimously commenting on our museum-quality work and meticulous attention to detail. As Mr. Glofsky has already stated, the building consists of two legal residences, the main house and the wing. Uh, it, but it's actually comprised of three distinct living spaces. First and second floors of the main house, the third floor of the main house, and the wing, all of which have their own kitchens and baths, and all of which were in place when we bought the house in the spring of nineteen ninety-eight. Due to our advancing age and my serious medical issues, we decided over three years ago that the time had arrived to pass on the baton, and we have since been actively marketing the property as both a single-family and a two-family residence. Despite the fact that we lowered our asking price four times, we have not received a single formal offer. Invariably, the response from prospective buyers has been that while the building and grounds are absolutely breathtaking, the size of the main house, which currently encompasses all three floors with a total of approximately fourteen thousand square feet of living space, is simply too large. Our conclusions are that times have changed, market has spoken, and that this extraordinary property can only be preserved in its original state with no changes to the exterior of the building and with no development on the expansive grounds if the main house is separated into two smaller units, first and second floors and the third floor, so that the operating and maintenance expenses for the entire property can be uh, can be divided by three as opposed to just one or two. This division of the main house into two units can be accomplished simply by adding a fire door between the second and third floor levels of the main staircase. Without approval of the third unit, the only other potential options sadly appear to be number one, build additional residences on the property via a subdivision plan. Number two, repurpose the building to an alternate use. Or number three, demolish the building and completely redevelop the property. In our opinion, none of these options would represent a favorable outcome for such a magnificent and historically important property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'll move on. I'm Cynthia Camino. Thank you for your time. Six nineteen last night, Philip and I received a text from Ron Carterelli stating that he had just had a WebEx with his attorney and that he would be opposing our request for a permit. He said that he would support the permit if we removed the easement on his property. He has brought this up during our previous discussions, and we told him that it was the only entry to the parking area and access to the second dwelling. The rear driveway is also critical for access to the far side of the house for a wide variety of routine maintenance, septic system, well and irrigation system, roofing, electrical, plumbing, carpentry, painting, system, oil and propane delivery, fire and ambulance access. Philip and I have maintained this back road for the past twenty-five years at our exclusive expense. We have it plowed and cleaned and branches pruned. We even had the ru- the, the road graded to remove ruts. We also paid to have the cobblestones installed at the transition between the asphalt and the dirt sections of the road. We repeatedly reached out to Mr. Carterelli to ask if he would support a request of the third dwelling, and he consistently responded that he hadn't made his mind up. His last visit just one week ago in our kitchen lasted over two hours. We promised him there would be no Airbnb. Would include it in our condo docs. Yet, at ten thirty A M. this morning, we received a six-page letter of objection from his attorney, which our attorney said obviously took several weeks to prepare.
Oh, can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Where did you not hear? Where did I lose you?
Uh, you, at the, uh, the six-page document you received this morning.
Sorry about that.
Oh, at thirty A M. today, we received a six-page letter of objection from his attorney, which our attorney said obviously took weeks to prepare. Ron Carterelli suggested he won't oppose if we release him of the easement that we have a legal right to. He is trying to derail the special permit process for his own personal gain. Additionally, he has told us about his intention to purchase our home, but only if he can steal it from us, and these are his words, not mine. He had used this term about our home several times and even said, I could be the king of the hill. This is the true motivation behind Ron Carterelli's actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, attorney.
Katie.
Amy, would you like to speak?
I'd be happy to. So, good evening. My name is Bill Heaney, and my law practice is located on Eighty-Six Star Street in Beverly. I represent Ronald Carterelli, the trustee of the Ronald Carterelli Living Trust tonight. Uh, the trust owns Three Dexter Lane, and Mr. Carterelli resides at Three Dexter Lane. And they are the immediate butters just to the north of the applicant's property of One Dexter Lane. Uh, and it, as we just heard, the applicant does have a right of way over my client's land, and that right of way is a big part of all the discussions. Um, for a number of reasons, we think that this special permit application is not properly before this board. Uh, and that's why we did submit the memo to you. The memo that was submitted today, I'm, I'm not gonna go through it paragraph by paragraph or even paraphrase it. It's very legal in nature and is really more in line with what my office submits to the land court in an appeal. Uh, so what I'd like to do, if I could share my screen, I have a, a flow chart that I would like to take the board through as I analyzed One Dexter Lane. as I analyzed One Dexter Lane and what they can and cannot do by right and by special permit. But I believe I need to have permission to share. Here we go. The host disabled my screen sharing.
You don't want to share. You want to let him share. All right, so I have to go into, whoops. Can you share now?
Uh, yes.
Great.
Just let me see if I can find it now.
Sorry.
Always you, yes.
Can you see that? Is that up?
No, not yet. We're just seeing the list of.
You see file names.
How about now? It's showing on my screen, but it's not showing on yours.
No, we're just seeing a list of files.
You have monitors?
I do.
Monitor. If you have two monitors.
Yes, so I gotta bring it over?
Click on the other monitor that you have. That might be it.
Is that on your screen now?
No, no.
What am I doing wrong?
He said two monitors open.
It worked on my last hearing where I just clicked on it.
John said you have two monitors open in your.
I do.
Maybe we're clicked on one and not the right one, not the correct one.
Okay. This is not going to work so well. There you go. Is that on now?
It's thinking.
Thinking about it.
Just one page. Is it not popping up?
Uh, no.
Is this something you sent us?
No, I was trying to streamline it for you. Well, I will just walk you through it. And hopefully, we can just kind of talk our way through it. So I apologize for that technical glitch. All right, so if, if I, and I, and I did pay attention to Attorney Glofski's presentation, and I, and I do respect his work a lot. But I think Attorney Glofski skipped over a lot of the, the threshold issues that when one looks at One Dexter Lane and what they're allowed to do by right and what they're allowed to do by special permit in the town of Manchester was either overlooked purposely or just simply glossed over. The, the, the very first thing that you have to look at when you look at One Dexter Lane is that it is in Zone C, which is a single-family residential district. What's different between Zone C and Zone D is that in Zone D, they're allowed multi-unit dwellings by special permit. Zone C, which is four-point-oh and four-point-one-one, if you're following along in your bylaw, specifically states one dwelling unit per property. The position that the applicant has put forward is that they are a pre-existing non-conforming use as a two-family. It's pretty much just a bold statement. They, they did not provide any proof that this property was a multi-unit property before zoning was enacted or at any time during the zoning changes in the town of Manchester. The, uh, initial decision to be a non-conforming use is the burden of the applicant, and we feel that they didn't meet that burden at all in their application. They, they really provided nothing other than a statement that they are a non-conforming use. But if, if you get past that and you accept their position that it has been a two-unit dwelling and is therefore a pre-existing non-conforming use under six-point-one-one, you can move on to look at the analysis and say, well, so as a pre-existing non-conforming use, what, what can they do? And to get to that point, you have to look and see if they are still an existing non-conforming use and if that use has been abandoned. And if you look at your zoning bylaw, six-point-one-point-four, which states that non-conforming uses can be abandoned if not used for a period of two years. So in our memo that we got to late, late this morning, and I do apologize for that, you will see some exhibits that clearly show that since two thousand and nineteen, the applicants have been advertising this as a single-family home. It does not appear that there are any tenants in the property or a second family living there based on any of their marketing. And that's listing sheets from, you know, different realtors that they've hired over the years. In addition to that, I went to the Manchester Library today. It's a beautiful library you have in Manchester, and I pulled out the street index. And in that street index, it lists who's been living at the properties. And if you were to look at the Manchester Index for two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two, the only residents listed there are three members of the applicant's family. There are no other second families listed in your street index. I, I took the time to look back through the years. There is a gap notably in the street index from two thousand and eleven till two thousand and twenty, so you can't really tell. But the years that are readily available at the Manchester Town Library from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and ten, when you review those years, you, you can see that there were times where they did apparently rent Unit One B. So there is one, two, three, four, five, there are six years during that time period where the records show there was a second family living. So at times, I do believe that this property was used as a two-unit dwelling. But when you read your bylaws, it's very clear that if you don't use it as a two-unit dwelling for a period of two years, you abandon your use. And that is because zoning bylaws, from the big picture of things, want to promote conformity. That's the whole idea of the zoning bylaws. The whole philosophy behind them is conforming properties. Zone C is a single-family district, and they want to promote single families in Zone C. I think it's the board's duty to promote single-family homes in Zone C. But I don't think the board can look beyond the fact that this property has, for all intents and purposes, been used as a single-family property for more than two years and has abandoned its non-conforming use. So it is no longer a non-conforming property. It's a conforming property in Zone C. And in Zone C, you're not allowed multi-units with a special permit. Therefore, the application on its face fails. It's simply not something the board can grant. If the board were to take the analysis further, and again, this is all before we even get to what Attorney Glofski went through. If you want to take the position that it is a non-conforming use, it was not abandoned, that they have had two families living in there continuously, you then have to go and look at your zoning bylaws, which the next part of the analysis would be looking at seven-point-five-point-one. Seven-point-five-point-one is a very, very strong bylaw in the town of Manchester. And what it says is it prohibits any special permits that reverse, vary, or alter any provision, any applicable provision of the bylaw. So, and I'm not a wordsmith, but a little reading comprehension tells me that seven-point-five-one prohibits any special permits that reverse, vary, or alter any applicable provisions of the bylaw. Four-point-one-point-one is an applicable provision of your bylaw that states in Zone C, only single-family dwellings. So it's a bit of a circular argument. But once you get past the non-conforming use, the potential abandonment of the non-conforming use, you still have a bylaw that is on point in Manchester that you cannot grant a special permit if it alters another applicable provision. Four-point-one-point-one is applicable. That is Zone C in Manchester. So for those three reasons, I don't think the applicant can even ask for a special permit here tonight. It's all a part of the initial analysis. If the board were to disagree with that initial analysis and determine that the applicant is allowed to apply for a special permit, then you get to the discussion that Attorney Glofski spent so much time on, which is the seven-point-five-point-two, which are the factors to be considered. I will run through those very quickly just in case the board disagrees with my previous opinion that a special permit is, is possible for this property. I really can't find any legal reason why a special permit would be appropriate for this property. But if you disagree with me, I can respect that, and I can run through the factors that the board has been asked to consider. Adextrally, the site in terms of size, it's a, it's a big lot. It's five-point acres. It's a beautiful property. I did not make it to the walk-through, but I was able to walk around and get a look at it. And yes, it's, it's a, it's a sizable property that could certainly house a number of people if it was in a different location or perhaps in a different zone in Manchester. Suitability of the site for the proposed use is exactly the big hang-up that we would have that Attorney Glofski and the applicants thought the property was so suitable for. This property is served by a very long right-of-way that runs along my client's property to get to the rear of their property. If this five-acre property was suitable for multiple units, one would think that this massive property could have all of its access and all of its driveways on its own lot. If it was truly suitable, they would not need to drive over my property's land to get, or my client's property, to get to the back of the house. We're not saying they don't have a legal right to do it. We're saying they have a legal right to do it for as the property sits. And to increase that use would be an overburdening of the right-of-way. The overburdening of the right-of-way would be a legal determination for the land court and not before this board. But I think it speaks to the suitability of the property. If they got to use the neighbor's property to access, access, access it, it's simply not suitable. If you go down to the next item, which is the impact on traffic flow and safety, if you've driven up there, it's, it's absolutely beautiful. It, uh, it reminds me of Vermont where I'm from, except for the roads are paved and the houses are very big and nice and well-maintained. But nonetheless, it's still a very narrow, curvy road that really can support a minimal amount of traffic and a safe factor. I don't think the applicant has provided any traffic studies or any opinions from the public safety people in town that the, uh, the traffic would not be an issue or that the water supply for the town serving the fire hydrant would have enough pressure to support another residency. I don't, I don't think the applicant provided any of that information. I think those would be very fair questions to ask. If you run down the list, the visual character, no disagreement there. They're not changing the exterior of the structure. They're not changing any of that, but it would change the visual characteristic for my client, who would be witnessing.
Use the right audio apps for you.
It would be changing my client's visual impact because much more traffic would be traveling over that right-of-way. As you add more families, more units, you're going to have, and as life, life changes, right, the Amazon truck's been at my house twice today. You're going to have more Amazon delivery trucks, more UPS trucks, FedEx trucks.
For a second, a second, because you've been going on a long time. Am I correct that the rear driveway is what accesses the existing second unit and the new unit being created would be access to the front driveway?
I believe that the driveway accesses the back unit and the third unit, but Attorney Glofski represented differently during his presentation.
That's not what we saw at the site, isn't it? The front driveway would service the new unit.
Okay. So right now, there's still nobody living there, so it's an increase in the traffic for my client. If, if we're even going to get to the seven-point-five-point-two, which I really don't think you can get there. The adequate utilities and public services, again, can't really speak to that, but we haven't had anything provided by the Public Safety Department. And, and the sewage, we would, we would defer to the Board of Health. The property is served by two different sewer systems, so those, those are items that we could, you know, agree with, if you will. But it doesn't change the fact that when you go from at best two units, in actuality, it's one dwelling unit. When you add a third in there, you're going to increase the pressure on the neighborhood, and that is substantially more detrimental and injurious to the neighborhood. It is specifically injurious to my client, who is the abutting property owner, who is also the burden property with a right-of-way. I'm happy to review anything else with you. I do think it's a rather technical argument, but a rather quick read of six-point-one-point-four, which is the abandonment of the use, and then your very own bylaw, seven-point-five-point-one, really makes it an improper ask tonight for a special permit.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Glofski, would you like to respond?
Yes, I would, if I may. With respect to Attorney Haney's suggestion that there's no evidence that it's a two-family, I would say that the assessors' card at Town Hall lists the property as a two-family. The Caminos have been paying taxes on the property on the basis of its being a two-family since they acquired the property. Building permits that have issued for the property have issued for this, for separate units. So I think there's plenty of evidence that it has, in fact, been used as a two-family. With respect to abandonment, I, I would respectfully suggest that there has not been abandonment. First of all, there has to be intent to abandon. There is not in this case. And secondly, the prob, the dwelling unit that you're referring to has been used and occupied, not always by, uh, third parties, most recently because of Mr. Caminos's recent stroke. He's had a lot of family there, and so for the last couple of years, for the most part, it's been family living in that second unit. And they wouldn't be listed on the list that you were, you were reviewing at the Town Library. I think that Cynthia Camino, who's here, can explain that she, in fact, during the period they were trying to sell the property, did have tenants there, and consequently, she had to get permission from them when they were doing showings. I don't know whether you can add anything else to your use of the apartment over the last twenty-five years.
Uh, yes, we had renters on and off, but when we put the house on the market with Engle and Volkers and Julie Smith was the agent, we had a couple here that were still here from the woman from Brookline and he from Winchester. And I would have Julie call me and give me a two-hour window so I could let her know so she could fix up the apartment before we had a showing. And it often happened where she was gone, and I would ask her, could I go in there and just, you know, clean things up before we have a showing? So we definitely had people there. In two thousand and twenty, on March eleventh, our daughter was living in California. She moved home that day, as my son did, to come and help me take care of my husband, who had. to come and help me take care of my husband, who had a massive stroke. Janet stayed with us for over one year. In fact, I had dinner one evening and I had Ron for dinner and Janet came down to meet him. And prior to that, had many other people.
The last point I'd like to make is in response to your suggestion that the property's only been listed as a single-family. But in the materials that you submitted to the zoning board today is a copy of the MLS listing sheet, which says a legally-zoned two-family residence consisting of the main house and the wing. And that's right in the MLS listing sheet that is part of the packet that Attorney Haney submitted to the board.
If I may, and I don't wanna.
How can you have a lot of back and forth going on here?
That's okay, I just wanted, I won't deviate from any of the issues that Attorney Globski just brought up. But I would like to have my client get a chance to speak. Regarding that listing sheet and being illegally zoned, that's a realtor's opinion, that's not a legal opinion. You can't give any weight to that. The document clearly says it's a single-family residence and it's marketed as that. That was their intent.
Doesn't matter what it's marketed at, we don't care. It matters what's on the town records, I'm sorry. Mr. Carterelli, would you like to speak? I'm gonna limit you to five minutes.
I have one more comment that was on Mr. Globski. So even if you get past the abandonment issue, you still have your very own bylaw that you have to grapple with, which is 7.5.1, which pursuant to 7.5.1, you can't grant a special.
You know, we know the bylaws.
Okay.
Tell us what the bylaws are.
Sorry, I was just trying to point it out, no undue respect.
Thank you. Mr. Carterelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is the first time I've ever been to a zoning meeting, very interesting. You know, I've enjoyed the company of the Cominoses. I'm not gonna say anything negative about them. I did have discussions with them. And I'd said that I wanted to keep business on one thing and hoped we'd be friends. So I was a little surprised. I think it's a beautiful home. I didn't have great interest in it. I had some interest in it because I'd like to be by the ocean. My concern is, I moved from Pine Street here in 2019 and have been fixing up and restoring this property like Philip and Cynthia have for the last, you know, two or three years. I bought it thinking I was in a, you know, single-family zone and for the privacy. And when I was with the Cominoses and things may have changed, it was the two units that we're gonna be using that easement. And so that goes right by my living room and right by my great room. And there's hardly anybody that ever goes through there now. So that's an increase and that will impact my property, I feel, and its value. And so that's why, you know, I was trying to collect as much information as I could. I was working with Bill. But we didn't talk till last night. I travel all over the country and I've been busy and the Cominoses know that as well. So I don't know what will come of this. But I am disheartened because I love it up there. And I don't think it's gonna be as quiet if there's two families that are living there year-round besides the other family. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on this application? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none. Scott Susko?
Yes. Scott Susko, Six by Rock Hill. I don't have a great deal of insight into either of the parties' arguments. And I live, I'm removed from living over there by quite some distance. But just as a matter of public who has been watching the zoning board and issues that we struggle with, I tuned in because I lived on Pine Street next to Mr. Carterelli for a number of years. And what I was interested in was, you know, he's asking the Cominoses to turn square corners with what they're asking. And I was just interested if that would be, if he would be consistent in how he approached that type of issue when he was on Pine Street. So that's my only comment from a contextual standpoint and I won't use any more time of the board.
Thank you. Okay, I'm now gonna have a discussion with the board. Okay. Now, Mr. Haney raised the issue of the bylaw. It's my understanding under 6.1.2 that we have a right to issue a special permit if a non-existing, non-conforming use is changed, extended, or altered. It seems to me that if you're going from a two-family to a three-family, that's a change in existing, non-conforming use and is not a new, non-conforming use. If it were a new, non-conforming use, we wouldn't be able to rule on it because it would require variance. But it seems to me it's multi-family.
It seems to make sense that this, we just changed the non-conformities.
Correct, and there's nothing being added on to the space.
There's no structural changes. They're not changing any rooms, they're just adding a by door.
Kitchens are already existed.
Yeah. And then the, and of course, the alternative is this could be divided into five separate lots.
Which would be far worse.
Or it could be another perverse situation that we've seen elsewhere in this town with, you know, parties coming in and repurposing properties in manners that we don't wanna see.
Right, yeah. Your thoughts, Catherine?
I am, I'm struggling a little bit with the issue of the non-conforming use and whether it's been existing and used sort of continuously. I understand that they've had families stay in these places and stuff, but to me, that seems a little different than like actually operating as a two-family dwelling.
But you're not required to rent a two-family dwelling. And it's completely, it's completely separate from the main house. I mean, there's a hallway and entrance separating the two.
I understand that.
And it's a full residence.
Yes, it's very large, it's clear. So I really like, I think this is a great use for the property. I really like this project. I'm struggling a little bit with the legal technicalities here. Because I think it is important that we're consistent and that we interpret our bylaws appropriately and consistently. So I, that's where I am right now, I'm open to hearing more from other people, but I'm.
It seems to me that if it wasn't a two-family, then that would mean they would have extended the entire main house into the wing and used the entirety for themselves.
To Catherine's point, I was struggling with that myself as far as Attorney Haney anyone's going through what he referred to as abandonment. Okay, I was satisfied, however, with Attorney Globski's explanation as to that it wasn't abandoned, that they're having people in and out of it, okay? I don't, does paying rent constitute a legal second, a separate unit? They happen to pay taxes on two-family, the pound is recognized as a multi-family unit. So I heard what Attorney Haney said and I heard what Attorney Globski said, and I've been satisfied.
And the house has been on the market for several years. And anybody who's ever purchased a multi-family knows that it's hard to, well, it's hard to market a house when you have tenants living there because you have to plan around their schedules. You have to make sure that their unit's always clean. Sometimes tenants don't want people walking through their space. I've been there before where I'm on the market for something and I can't see a specific unit because the tenants living there won't allow me to see that. You know, as an example. And so I understand why if someone is listing their house, it's more efficient for them to not have that unit rented.
No one wants to buy a house with an existing tenant.
Correct, because you don't know, it might come with baggage, you never know.
My question would be, why would you have the house listed as a single-family?
It wasn't.
Stretch the rules all the time and list things.
It was the alternative, I think.
The party audience is someone who's looking for a stately mansion and they're not going online, plugging in two-family, three-family. They're looking for single-family homes. And so, that would, it's a search.
But the MLS from one, I hadn't seen it.
But for me, that's irrelevant. The fact of the matter is, this is a very unique property that would require a very unique buyer at this scale. We've seen many other properties that have been converted into condos. You know, like there's a couple of successful ones that I know of in Beverly Farms. They've done very well. I see this as an opportunity for empty nesters to come in and, you know, live in the condo units and remain in town. That's how I see this. Otherwise, I mean, 19,000 square feet is very, very large for a family to come in, you know, for that opportunity. It's just, it's too, it's too large. And so I think it's a great reuse, repurpose of the space, you know, going from a two to three unit. And it's all there, the kitchens are there. And the property, by the way, is beautiful. It doesn't really need any work to get it, you know, to make it into three condos.
Just one door.
Just one door.
And to that point, the other point is that, yeah.
Would your clients consider as condition that the access to this third unit would be through the front driveway?
Yes.
Okay. So it wouldn't go over the neighbors.
So what does go over?
The existing unit two that's been there forever.
I know what I was gonna say, that the fact that it's six acres of land, yeah, there is no neighborhood. More or less.
Well, we talked about site suitability and so there's plenty of acreage. And we have to remember that this house was there before any other house up there on that hill. This house has been here for over 100 years.
Your thoughts, James?
I think that the applicant's proposal is, at this point, for marketability, probably the highest and best use and the most realistic use of them effectively selling the property. I also look at, in the absence of our approval here, there could be far worse things done to this property that would have a very negative impact on the neighborhood in the future. A subdivision, for example. So I think if we can successfully address the access drive issue, hopefully that'll satisfy Mr. Carterelli. And I think this is a good, a good resolution of them trying to part with a property they've spent many years maintaining and done a remarkable job with. And I commend them for their efforts. So I'd like to see this go forward.
John, do you have any thoughts?
No, I mean, as long as, I mean, I agree with, as long as they use the front drive to not add to the the use of the easement there. Yeah, I would see it be a good use. I'd agree with him.
Yeah. No, I was just gonna say that I, no, I don't have anything to say. No, no, I just, I think the easements are not an issue for me. They have a legal right to use it. I don't, I'm not concerned by that. But if it makes everyone like a little happier to put that condition in there, then.
That's fine, but I wouldn't restrict the easement there.
Yeah, it's there, I don't think, you know, it's legally there, but.
What we're suggesting is Unit 3 would be accessed through the main driveway and not the easement. So there essentially would be no change of use to the access drive or no additional traffic on that.
So Catherine, you're saying that we shouldn't even put that in?
I wouldn't.
I don't think that, I don't know that we have the, you know, it's a.
It's on the deed.
On the deed, according to the registry of deeds. Like we can't, it is what it is, it says what it says. And if it doesn't, if it's not restricted already, the use, we can't, I don't think we have the ability to restrict the use. But if they wanna agree that between themselves, like that's certainly totally fine and, you know, whatever. But if they could change the easement, they could refile the deed, whatever. But that's, I don't think we have the authority to change the easement.
Okay, so you don't want it as a condition for this, which I know.
I don't think so. To act in good faith.
Okay. Because when Mr. Carterelli bought his house, there was an unrestricted easement.
Right.
Correct. Should we call the vote?
I have to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Mark Globski on behalf of T. Philip and Cynthia Caminos for a special permit under Section 6.1.2 and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to extend the current non-conforming use of the property as a two-family home to a use as a three-family home at One Dexter Lane, Assessors Map Number 36, Lot Number 11 in District C, filed with the town clerk on October 17, 2022. Based on a finding, there is sufficient parking for a three-family residence, converting 4,000 square feet of an existing 18,624-square-foot two-family into a third unit on a 233,743-foot square-foot lot is preferable to dividing the property into five building lots with four new residences. The proposed extended use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood which it is located. The requirement and conditions under 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the condition, the third unit conforms with the third-floor plan layout drafted in October 2022 by National Floor Plans and conforms with any requirements imposed by the Manchester by the Sea Fire Chief. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Is that a sufficient motion?
Yes.
Any discussion?
No.
You ready to vote? John?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Catherine? Approved. Sean?
Approved.
Ryan? And Sarah, approves. I can write this one, I have time.
Thank you.
Who would like to?
Okay.
James. So you all sat.
Thank you very much for your time. And we will do our best to work with Mr. Carterelli to make sure that any issues that he's identified can be addressed as well as we can.
We'd appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
We're now going to move to the application of Ronald Athanas for the appeal of a planning board decision under Section 7.4.5 of the zoning bylaw regarding a request for a curb cut filed with the town clerk on August 4, 2022 and denied by the planning board on September 26, 2022 at 5A Arbella Street, Assessors Map Number 40, Lot Number 12 in District D, filed with the town clerk on October 4, 2022. Russ Brown, are you going to speak on behalf?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I'm Russ Brown with Metaxis Brown Pigeon. I represent Ron and Dorothy Athanas on this appeal, which is somewhat unusual, given that the. Given that there have been some changes in the zoning bylaws as of last night, but. Before we get to that. Um. Uh the appeal before you, of course, is uh because of the denial, and we're here because. Um the basis for the appeal being that. Um the substantive expert opinion coming from. Uh both the chief of police and from the DPW was that. The curb cut was, met all their standards with um with respect to public safety, drainage and. All of the relevant issues, but I wasn't there. And I don't know why the planning board decided uh that they would not approve. This curb cut, and perhaps it was that they didn't understand. Um that although this driveway, this property has a driveway as was approved. By this board's special permit um. The parking uh is in a garage on the basement level. And at the time that the Thanas is. Uh um submitted and received that special permit from this board. Um they didn't, hadn't contemplated what that parking arrangement was going to mean for them. As they moved into their late seventies, so the reality of. Uh their living is that they uh got into an age where. They can't manage particularly um Mrs. uh Mrs. Athanas can't manage the climb. Uh with any kind of groceries or anything that um. To carry from down there up to her living level. And they are looking, as I think I explained on the site visit. Uh they are looking to have a driveway entrance so they can drive to their front. Kitchen door. Um and unload their things. And so uh commonsensically, because the. Police Department and the DPW uh supported this application. Uh we feel that there is, was no good rational basis for not giving it, so we're here before you because of that. And of course um. There is this issue that as of. Last night. Uh the zoning bylaw no longer contains a provision. Um for the planning board. Requiring uh going to the planning board. For a special, for a curb cut. Uh but I think uh in the gray area that we seem to be in. Um the better courses for us is to seek and, you know, a. Reversal of the planning board's decision based on the facts that I just gave you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this application? Please raise your hand. No, okay. Um. We'll have a discussion in the board and maybe come back to you for some questions. Um. I guess I have a couple of concerns. The. Bylaw passed Monday night, which isn't in effect yet cuz the Attorney General has to sign it and doesn't really apply to this application. They applied before the change. In order for the DPW um to approve. Curb cut. Can't exceed twelve feet in width. But it also can be only one curb cut per lot. So. It seems like this would have gone to the planning board. Anyway, even if the new. Bylaw was in effect, so at least we need to. Consider that um. You know, I I think that when we approve the special permit. There were some trees depicted in front of the addition which are gone. If we approve the driveway. I would wanna limit it to twelve foot width and then have a couple of trees planted between the lot line and the driveway. There was no landscaping in this yard. What do other people think?
I think that's a reasonable compromise and it makes a lot of sense.
I'm okay with that as well, I mean, I understand. The the need for the curb cut in terms of just the convenience for that, you know, the people staying in that unit. Um. And and I see the. Chief of Fitzgerald is the ultimate. Authority on public safety, and so if he's okay with it. And the DPW is okay with it. Then, you know, I'll follow their lead. But also, I mean, this current sidewalk as as it stands now. There's no curb there, but one can, someone can drive their car over that. And continue to use that driveway as it is. So I see that as more dangerous. You know, as it, as it exists. Then, you know, without, than with the proper cur- curb cut.
Yeah, I think we did, to your point, when people walking in a sidewalk, they see this, they see an actual driveway, a curb cut.
You you, you see the curb cut, you anticipate the driveway.
Yeah.
I got that.
Of course, the other thing in Chief Fitzgerald's letter. Which gives me a little bit of pause is. He said. Because they would only be, they only here five months of the year, would be mostly using it in the summer, it wouldn't adversely impact. Wouldn't be used during the school year much. But if circumstances change and I live here here year-round, or somebody else buys the house and lives here year-round.
I still think it's safer to have a curb cut than not, if people are gonna use the driveway.
So there there's the, there's the bike rush, right, right after school, and I do with my kids, I go through there all the time. And so that's just a s- a small period right after school. They come or up, you know, from around.
Yeah.
And um. And but there's a a whole series of driveways on that street, so what's one other smaller driveway, like in the grand scheme of things?
And if you're clever, you don't allow that driveway.
Have to be careful. It's a, it's a dense area, the houses are 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 close together. But again, like when you see a curb cut, you anticipate the driveway and you look to see if there's, there's cars back now.
Um I have a, like a foundational question, cuz I don't know if I've. Done an appeal like this, what is our standard of review for an appeal, like what do we? What's our standard?
A challenge with this particular decision.
Yeah.
Is the only thing it said it was denied due to public safety.
Yeah, I mean, so.
And so if we're, if we're reviewing it in my. I feel we can only consider the public safety aspect. Um it they, there could have been other reasons, they could have been explained more.
Right, they were.
As to why they denied it and they didn't. Um so we can't really interpret what they said, we have to look at the public safety aspect and.
Yep.
We have a police chief. Who says he's not concerned.
Yeah.
And the GPW.
I mean, I have a concern of discrepancy with a special permit, which is why I would like to require the two trades.
Well.
As a condition. I don't think that's unreasonable. Cuz when we approved the special permit. There was no driveway. And there were trees.
There's.
In front of the addition.
One tree. That's the one that got cut.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought, then we do, yeah. A big one and a little one.
I don't remember the trees or the landscaping being an issue in the granting of that special permit.
Well, we talked, we did, we talked about, we were concerned about lack of landscaping, we talked a lot about that. Main driveway. But, you know, I think with climate change.
I mean, I like trees too, I and I would like to see more trees planted too, I just don't know if it. I don't know, I don't know.
My. My concern, you're, when you're, you're talking about adding trees into a ten-foot area, where you're gonna be over the line. Now you're involved in. The neighbor's yard when you're putting trees there. At the girls. So you're affecting what now they are responsible for also.
Don't we want trees?
Uh for me.
I do want trees.
From my perspective, I'm not hung up on it.
I like trees.
You're talking to somebody with a lot next to them, every single tree was cut down.
Send them where you can, Johnny Appleseed.
Okay, so you don't want the tree thing.
Best effort to enhance the landscaping at the house.
And I I I, and it's in their best interest to try to enhance the landscape.
Of course.
Okay.
A dwarf tree.
Is that fair, Mister Athanas? Or or Rusty?
Yes, I I think when we were at the site visit, um. That issue came up, I can't remember who brought it up, but um Mike Athanas was there and he offered to put another tree in. I think um he 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 ass- he readily assented to that idea. And I think uh Mike was. Here, but he's, I think he's departed.
No, I am. Excuse me, I'm here, I was just on mute, sorry. Um like I did say, like Russ did say, uh on Saturday, if we need to put a tree in there. Um that's fine by us, we can do that.
We don't have any correspondence from.
Okay, we won't make it a condition. Of the special permit, but we really appreciate it if we do it on good faith.
No problem.
Okay. We didn't get anything from any neighbors on this, right?
No.
No, nobody here who wants to speak. So we good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move to approve the appeal of Ro- Ronald Athanas of the planning board decisions and deny a curb cut. Thereby granting a curb cut at five A, Arbella, Arbella Street, Assessors Map number forty. Lot number twelve in District D. Based on a finding that the police chief states the additional curb cut in driveway will not raise a safety concern. And the DPW director is in agree agreement. Provided the width of the driveway is reduced to twelve feet, consistent with the new general bylaw approved at town meeting. On eleven fourteen, twenty twenty-two, not yet approved by the Attorney General.
Thank you very much.
They've agreed to put down to twelve feet.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Make a vote, John.
Approved.
James.
Approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
Sean. Brian. And Sarah approves. Want me to write this one too?
I will.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, members of the board, the Athanas. They very much appreciate your support, they really do. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We're now moving on to administrative matters. Review and approval of meeting minutes. We have September twenty-first, we have October nineteenth. And the other thing I did is I asked for a change to the August minutes. Because when I wrote the decision for thirty-nine Coolidge Point. I realized that all the conditions we had included were missing from the minutes. Go ahead, those add, I ask you to add those. It's funny, when you went to trouble writing it. You didn't get that first. Have people read the September twenty-first minutes?
Yeah.
Are we, are we good with them, any changes?
One missing bullet going on to the team.
Okay, I agree with that.
That's it. Oh, okay.
It's on your specialty was grammar.
Gail, are you on?
I am.
So on page four of the um.
September.
Twenty-fourth. First minute, you've got three bullets. And then there's a paragraph that starts with Miss Delicio, that should be bulleted also.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Um do I have a vote? Everyone in favor? Oh, I'm, oh, I'm going to approve the minutes of September twenty-first, do I have a second? Catherine, seconds. As as amended by adding the bullet.
Yes.
All in favor? Yes, yes, okay. Did anybody look at the October nineteenth?
No.
So please review them before the December meeting so we can get them approved. Yes, and we have another application. For eleven, um Lincoln Ave. Adding. Twenty square feet.
Yeah, powder room.
To make a powder room on the first floor and remove so a landing, an exterior landing. Okay. Is there any? Anyone else wants to discuss, oh, status of decisions?
Nine Washington Street, outstanding.
Who's doing that?
Mister Mitchell.
No. Okay, with which meeting, which uh, is that September or October?
It's October.
Do you need a copy of the minutes to take home? Cuz they're not on the website?
Yes. No, they must be on the web. They're not?
They don't get on the website until you approve them.
Okay, so.
So wait.
When will they be on the website?
Well, we can't approve them until December at the earliest, so you need to write it. Who's reviewing that?
Oh.
Yeah.
I think you are.
Oh, okay.
I pulled that out of my hat, I'm not sure.
Sounds good.
I don't really work.
I'm waiting on a.
I did it. Um we were within uh two days of missing the ninety day deadline.
Were we really?
Yep.
Sorry.
Yep.
Oh god.
Brian, you're reviewing the one I'm running.
Oh, that's the one, okay.
Um. So, so. I just wanna touch base a little bit on the zoning changes.
Okay.
Okay. Just so people understand. Technically, once there's a public hearing for a zoning change. It means that we can't hear anything impacted. By the zoning change. So we've been impacted. Over a year. Um but the the two sections that impact us. Are the nonconforming uses without requiring a special permit, so that's more restrictive. Than the current bylaw, so we can still review things under the current bylaw. And the other is the ADUs that the new ADU by right is more restrictive. Than our current bylaw. Yeah, so we, we can still review under the current bylaw, but we have to review under the. You know, double the lot size and. And nineteen eighty, built before nineteen eighty-four. No square footage limit, um because that hasn't been approved. Okay, and those are the only two things. That affect us. What I can tell.
Your family. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think through what you're saying, we, what was the first part of your statement, once a zoning changes, I know?
Once there's a public hearing, once there, a public hearing is announced. For a zoning change, that puts us on hold. For hearing everything related to it, and the announcement of the public hearing was. February of.
Wow.
Twenty-two. Yeah.
So you're saying we can't.
We just changed all of our definitions, so like arguably, like everything's impacted.
Well, I'll look at the definitions and see. If there's material. Yeah. No, as lo- as long as they're. More restrictive or not material, we can go ahead and review things.
So as they come in, you're gonna review the applications.
Yeah.
So then, and everything, so. Potential existed. Something that someone wants to do can't be done.
Until the zoning issue. Until the zoning issue are resolved, because even though they passed over the zoning articles. They're still pending.
They could just do something about that.
Yeah, no, we had most of the, most of our apps have not been impacted by it.
So I think that um, my understanding is uh. They're gonna go back, maybe just do it in two different, maybe uh. Maybe a couple of them during town meeting and then the rest in during, I'm I'm speculating based on everything.
Maybe mail-in voting.
Mail-in voting, yes.
Like Ben's.
And then during that he's a liar, saying that that vote never comes.
Yeah.
I think uh maybe we'll see some of them.
In April.
How many is what I'm guessing. So I think that you recognize that this is too much to bite off.
It's too overwhelming and it's too.
Confusing. Needs to be better represented.
I mean, I think if you're doing ADUs, go ahead and change the current definition first. Realistic.
I'm the lowest common this, the board meetings, sub board meetings, I'm the lowest common denominator. You have to think that you're talking to me and I don't understand what you're trying to accomplish, you've got to simplify this. What happens, I think, at times is that when the planning board spends so much time looking at it, you can't see the forest, the trees. Okay.
And they're not familiar with the bylaws that that we use. So they don't use them. Which makes it more difficult.
No, I I might, you know, I I think that just I couldn't understand that why, it's kind of like anything else, I don't see why you don't see what I see.
Right.
Yeah, and they've been living with it.
Yep.
And it's become second nature, whereas most of us, most of the people in that room. And the first time they ever saw it was.
And they don't even know the existing bylaws.
Exactly.
Yes.
It's it's really en- enhancing the guidelines, not not creating new.
Yeah.
Policies, it's more really like like the like the adult entertainment thing, for instance. It doesn't mean that all of a sudden all adult entertainment is gonna be coming to the town. What it's saying is it's it's being defined.
Well, it's not gonna be in my, next to my house.
But what I'm saying, we're acknowledging that it exists out there and so that any anything like that came in front of us. At least it's it's written.
Uh the can, I mean cannabis, uh the sales of cannabis now are limited to the LCD as I would call it.
I think so, yeah.
And so is it about to.
I can't have it uh, it's, you know, next door under the the eleven central downstairs.
Right.
Jay McGlocken can't move in, move out in a uh. On truck, move in.
Right. Exactly. Too bad. I mean.
And it it's just.
Yeah.
They think, oh, it's coming, no, you're just acknowledging that it exists.
Right.
And we're set parameters for that.
We weren't, there was never anything that said you couldn't do an ADU.
Right.
Right.
Right, I think that out of the problem was that there was a perception or some would have, what one would have you think. That we don't allow ADUs. But my point is, it's not broken, we don't have to fix it.
It's been there.
It's been there.
Um, the the other thing I'll say is is I was gonna speak on four of the articles. And I did a lot of research as far as our historical applications and on the nonconforming section. Um, seventy six of a hundred and twenty seven applications would be impacted by that section. Of those sixty five would still require a special permit. So there were only eleven covering nine properties that would be able to go directly to a building permit. So it's not kind of as big as people, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's what like, that's what we had. Coming up to me and they're like, anyone can build a second home on their property and then they're they're just gonna build, they're gonna cover the whole thing with homes and there's gonna be renters and I'm like. It's like not what's happening, there are still rules about like how much property you have to have before you can add.
What I liked about the way it's structured now is that, yes, you as a neighbor have an opportunity to speak to. What they're trying to accomplish, okay?
Right.
Uh, and I and I just didn't see a pro, I had a member of the community work up to me on Monday. Start talking, I said, no. Well, I've got, you know, there are there are there are there are numbers that, I said, I don't want to hear the numbers, I'm done. Because and because I'm one of two, uh Captain Lottor and I both voted against the support of the ADU.
Okay.
Okay, it was three two on that one, that's supposed to unanimous, so I was approached by that and I said. I like the, I like it the way it is. How many times, like I said, I asked before, how many have come before us?
Two or three?
Well, only one under the ADU by law. Five.
Big Russian, it's not like people.
Five under the employees living in the detached dwellings and of of those three were family members.
Well, again, it it's a very unique situation, these big houses with big barns that were built a hundred years ago and. You gotta repurpose them some way, otherwise they're just this albatross at the end of your driveway. And other towns don't have this problem, like Woburn doesn't have this problem.
Well, and you have.
You know what I'm saying?
You you have elderly people who lose their spouse, they don't want to stay in their house. They want their own space. So they'd rather be in a detached situation than part of the house with hearing, hearing the pitter patter of little feet.
And again, I have no problem with that at all, but there's a process.
Yep, but we'll see what happens.
On that note.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sorry, we have a December meeting, I really hope to avoid it. December twenty first.
Are you serious?
Yes.
Christmas, you're approved. Oh, 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 denied.